Time is six fifty nine. We're gonna go ahead and get started with our meeting because we know that two other board members are not going to be present. We got a revised agenda. And of course, two things we're going to do is the consent agenda. And has anybody had an opportunity to look at the financial report and the previous board minutes? Is there any discussion? Can I get a motion to approve? I think motion to approve the financial report and the crazy board members. Got a first and a second. Favorite say hi. On the poll, same side. And that. And next is going to be our superintendent.
Okay, and just update on our enrollment. We are currently at six hundred and fifty-six students. Six hundred and sixteen of those are K-12, A-40, and pre-K. And your nursing and wellness updates, the main things I want to highlight there is that we do have our free sports physical clinic coming up on May eleventh for all of our students who need that. Dr. Ray will be on site to do those again this year, so we'll be getting advertisement out about that to the community soon so the students know that that will be available. And also, we did get our dental services started back, so for now, for medical and dental onsite. And they're filling up the appointments and we've been seeing some students, so that's going really well. Real excited to have those services back for our students. On COVID, we're still under an optional mask. We only had one student case since last month's meeting. So we're not seeing really any activity with that at this time. Hopefully that will continue. And on technology, I wanted to just mention, this is kind of technology and safety and facilities, but under technology on page two, the third bullet, and we are looking at getting sensors installed in our restrooms at middle or high school. And they would detect not only like smoke from vape, cigarettes, marijuana, whatever. They would also detect noise which might indicate, you know, a bite or some type of commotion. It would also detect your disinfectant levels in the air, like if it's cleaning or the levels are low, things like that. It would help kind of keep a sanitary but also clean air environment. And these are tied to a server that would send a text message immediately to, you know, the principal and maybe if it's a set of bathrooms here, whatever the teacher is right across the hall, you know, we can decide who gets the text to go and check on it. And it records the time right before, during, and right after. So if someone's coming in or out, it gets it on camera in case you can't get to it immediately. You can, you can go back and see. And we believe we are going to be able to use our S R or some other categorical phones for this, but that's what we're still checking on. So I'm gonna get all the details and bring that back in May, but I'll let y'all know we are looking at doing something like that there on the facilities. And where our buses or Dustin's just kind of having to stay in close contact with them. They keep running into more part shortages and this and that. It's not just us impacted, it's everybody. But right now, our trip bus is built and just waiting on the air component before we get delivered. They're again having some problems with some parts. And they're still trying to keep this on schedule for end of the summer on our others, but he's also looking into some just different options if something falls through. But attention on that. The other thing I wanted to bring attention to our sports, in our sports, you know, we're mid, well, we're almost in end horse season now, baseball and softball. And we're about to wind down track as well. And we do have two state qualifiers. McKinley Manning and Will Braylon Washington, they've already qualified for the state track meet, so proud of them. I just want to publicly congratulate them. And we will be having a sports banquet on Thursday, May nineteenth. There will be more information coming out about that. Primary school, we still want to publicly say we, you know, are looking for anyone planning to be a pre-K or kindergarten next year to please, you know, contact the school and get signed up so we know our numbers, you know, and our staffing needs for next year. Good roundup, but we, we can take more and we certainly want to see more kids coming in. And all the schools are in testing mode right now this week. Primary school and high school are doing their state testing. Next week will be middle school, so we'll be getting that state testing done over course this weekend next. And there's some information here, just kind of showing you some things going on in the, some of the high school classrooms. And note that prom is coming up on April thirtieth at Henderson Haris Center. So excited that students can have a prom again this year without the COVID restrictions in place. Gradualational day, May twentieth at seven also. That will be here in the auditorium. And GT and AP, we've got a lot for Miss Manning. They've got a lot going on, but one of the exciting things is the junior high quiz bowl and getting a bid to nationals. So that is on the agenda tonight in the action items to consider approving that trip for them to, to the nationals again. The only other thing I wanted to point out is different from each time is we do have one additional page at the very end, which is our career tech and district stats report for 2021. We got that in April. It's, it's a year behind when they calculate different graduation rates. But we were above the state target in all areas except the last two. And the very last one, the state average was fourteen percent. So we were right there. Everybody is low on those right now. I think it's new components they could get, so we'll be working on those. Any questions? Oh, I did want to say too, on the facilities, we are also looking at heat and air or air quality projects with our S R events that we set aside about three hundred thousand dollars to look at improving our air quality. And I was able to, we, we had someone come down, well, we've had a few people come down and kind of do an audit. But I finally had somebody who was kind of giving us some actual possible numbers of what we're looking at on different things to kind of make a decision moving forward. And again, I hope to bring you something in May for this, but to totally change out air units and all is really way more than we have in our budget that we can do. We want to do something for every school, and I think we need to do something for everyone and not just one or two places. But the budget we have, the only place we could even replace units would be the middle school because they're newer, they're, they're up to date, you know, as far as coding. And but that would take the whole budget. But what we can do is across the district, we can install it's an ionization filtration system that attaches to the unit itself, self-cleaning, so there's no maintenance. And they know it has a fifteen plus life expectancy. There's no filter, you have to replace it annually, like there's no recurring cost and it can be moved. So if we were to build a new building, those could be moved to that new building on whatever units. And it basically simulates the fresh, or helps make the fresh clean air that some of our schools are not getting through outside, you know, refreshing. So that's something we're going to be getting a more specific quote on. And then I'll bring something to you in May on that, but that's something we could do for every, every campus to improve the air quality in our classrooms because some of them don't have any fresh air changeover in their rooms. So that's coming next. It's all in my report unless y'all have questions.
Do I have questions for Ms. Thomas? Let's move on. And the items are about action. First one is going to be approval revision for the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar. Change the last day of school from May twenty-fifth to the twenty-sixth, correct the number of student days, which is on page thirty. Our only question on that is just discarding something. That's nothing that we did that.
No.
Anybody got any questions regarding the new calendar, the update calendar?
Make a motion, please.
Make them.
I'm sorry?
I make a motion, we make them.
We have a motion, a second. Same sign, no. Second off, is to approve the desktop computer quote. That's why they laid out, that's on page thirty-one and thirty-three. The only question I have based on that is thirty-one and thirty-two, is thirty-one, thirty-two, and are they all separate quotes or is this, I'm not.
They are, just because of what they are and where they're going, but because they're from the same vendor and they're all desktops, we need to get more approval because altogether they're over the threshold on what has to be approved.
So you need all three quotes, that's, that's, that's what I'm.
Yeah, just approve all three of them for that total.
Because it was kind of confusing to the, you know, the quantity on one.
We're not supposed to try to split ones to keep from having to get more approval. So we want, even though these are different places and different things, it's sort of the same vendor and same type, just to be on the same side. We want to go ahead and have you guys approve it so the auditor wouldn't think we were trying to split something. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any questions based on these quotes? All I need is a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the quotes from G W, G D W G on the computers.
Yeah, the first and second, I don't want to say hi. No same side. Has approved. Next is personnel policy updates for twenty-two, twenty-three. We've got three seventeen, three nineteen, three twenty-six, eight thirteen, eight twenty, eight forty-five. Pages thirty-four to sixty-six. Does anybody have any questions based on those policies? The only question, it's just a comment and a, and a suggestion. I have read both three twenty-six and eight twenty, which is pretty much the same policy. I love it. I mean, I love what it says because everybody uses Title IX investigation. That's just the end thing now. The only thing I did not see is how the school district, we're work with law enforcement, you know, we're together. And my concern with that is based on what, how it reads, it kind of looks like that we're covering it up, covering it up because it's going to be an inside investigation. Because it says, hey, we're going to do this investigation and we're going to determine whether or not this act had took place. And to me, that sounds kind of biased. And, and, and the community will see that as cover up. So what I would like to suggest that, okay, we got this. And by law, everybody in the school district is a mandated reporter, correct? So I don't want to discourage any of our people if they feel like, hey, this act has occurred. I don't want to discourage them from calling the hotline or reporting it like they should have. And I also want the school to say, hey, you know, to tell law enforcement, hey, we got this complaint and we're doing our investigation and we want to work together with you. Because if we do our separate investigation, we may determine that, hey, we could call the hotline and guess what? Law enforcement will come back and they're going to re-interview all these witnesses. And any type of discrepancy, any kind of interview, especially on the defense attorney, they're going to say, hey, hey, wait a minute. You know, you changed your story here, you said one thing here, but you're saying something else here. I just want to make sure that the school and the prosecutor are on the same level. They get the same statement. And that way we won't have any problem.
I can get with that, yeah.
I'm not saying take that, just add that to the, say, hey, law enforcement will be.
I'll get with our policy person, I just get a warning for that and that. But I will also make it very clear to our staff that this doesn't supersede that mandated reporter. Even if you get a report, you can report, but then we do our investigation.
Exactly. I'm not stopping, yeah, I'm not stopping the school from doing an investigation. By, by all means, then let's do what we gotta do. But I won't, you know, if, if the act did occur, we don't want any kind of technicality for the person to get away. So that's all I got based on that. As far as policy itself, I'm good with it.
So you're going to check and see whether they're, the correct party interested in that in there or if we can't have that.
Yes, the thing is personnel policies may could be approved before my personal contracts are issued. And so it may be something we would need to come back and prove or look at or just understand. It can be a procedure and not policy.
Be something for us, you know, we, we don't.
And I can, I can make that very clear with our principles that that's an expectation, a procedure.
A long turnaround if you try to, you know, do it that way.
And then by next year, we might be getting it organized into there for the personnel policies. But yeah, we had to have personnel policies set before contracts are issued right first.
Yeah, I'd like to say, that's my only theory, you know. I just don't want the school district to be accused of bias.
I can work with that, can't you?
All right.
Okay, good.
You know, I'm going to miss this later.
No, you're not.
Anyway, do we have any other comments based on the news, police, and mostly? My, my motion to approve the personnel policy update for twenty-two, twenty-three?
Second.
First and second, I will prove, say hi. I will prove, same side. All right, next item is D, approved the eastern purchase of the digital store. Confused. Twenty-five dollars plus tax. It's six, seven, seventy. One thing I want to ask Mr. Riley, what are you trying to do, launch a rocket?
I haven't checked.
What, what, I mean, seriously, I mean, this, I mean, man, these are sucked up machines now. I'm coming down in America. My goodness. But I think that's it's a needed item for the mere fact that, hey, we're trying to, we're trying to train a future architect. I mean, it can do wonders with this, and then I've saw your specs. I, I'm impressed. I just wish I had ten thousand dollars to buy me one. But that's all I got to say. Anybody got any comments based on this system? Any questions on how this thing works? Because I'm telling you, it's a, it's a finale of a computer. What, what funding is going to play for this?
Yes, sir. So it's kind of hard, it's not operating, yeah.
I make a motion to approve the East lab purchase for the computer.
Please say hi.
Hi.
Close, same side. Next is approve the triple our junior high quiz bowl team to attend to the national academic competition.
Now I'll get some good fundraising plans.
We do, we're going to try and sell our chocolate bars, so you bring those to the next floor meeting. And Kate and Snow is going to do a fundraising map for us and give us twenty percent of the profits. So please go out, that's going to be the Monday, I think it's May sixteenth. If y'all want to go.
Where is that?
At, at Kate and Snow Chat Valley.
How many will you be taking?
We're going to have six, we have a smaller team this year, but we have six students. And then I have two other employees that'll go enact a chevron. So, yeah, they're a really pretty, a pretty tight team. So it's good, I like having a, you know, fewer because you don't have to substitute on in and out and they can kind of get into the game and it just works out a little better that way. So they're excited.
Now they won first in the small school division, is that right?
Okay, that was fourth grade.
Okay.
Last, last week or the week before, yeah, we've been going quiz bowl.
Yeah, I was, I knew. That one won, the, the fourth grade won first.
Yes, they did. And that was against, well, no, this is eighth grade, they won last week. That was what it was, eighth grade won against small and large schools. They, they were only beaten by Lakeside. So they were second overall in person small school. And that's some of these kids that are going to be on this team, that's three of these students. And then the other three are in that grade.
How much money would it take to save children?
Last time we went, which was twenty nineteen, it took around thirty-one hundred, thirty-two hundred. We had raised, we had raised almost exactly how much we spent. If I had known that we, I think we were under budget by about seventy bucks. We get sophomore time for chicken. But so it, it'll be a little less this year because we don't have as many kids. So well, I'll, I'll say that, the way everything's, all the prices are high with gas and everything, so it'd probably be around that much.
I think it's correct. I just do, how, how would you be traveling?
Dustin is in the process of figuring that out.
Okay.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve the trail.
We got a first, we had a first, a second.
I'm sorry. I'm just thinking about New Orleans. You wouldn't see me until it's time to come back.
They'd probably have to leave you down.
I'm just telling.
You don't take your money.
Anyway, we have a, we have a motion and a second. I'm sorry, all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Yeah. Like motions. The next aspect, that is personnel, and at this point, we're going to, we're going to go into executive session. I made this back in a regular session. And we're at personnel portion of our agenda. We all, we talked about it, discussed it, so we don't have any other comments. So all I need is a motion. I make a motion to accept the part twenty-two personnel package. Motion and second, all in favor, say hi. Close, same side. And also have a separate motion to re-employ issue contracts on May first. I want to use a motion. I make a motion to accept the re-employing issue contracts on May first, all license defense by staff that have not received notification. Abandon all from the superintendent reportman first.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say hi. Next is going to be approved, approved advice, proposed license and non-licensed salary schedule and supplementary pay scales. Anybody have any other comments? So we just spoke about. If not, on the biggest emotion.
I make a motion to approve the revised proposed twenty-two, twenty-three license and non-licensed salary schedules and supplemental pay schedules.
Motion and second. Move the eye. Close, same side. Next, you have to consider propose additional compensation plan of your retroactive. That'd be the only discussion. I make a motion when you accept the conservative additional compensation plan retroactive for the twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Say, motion and second. Prove. Close, same side. Last but not least, we have another, and we have anything else that I'd like to discuss. I, I just.
Administration.
Only thing I have is just a comment to ask Mr. Riley on a video retention. How, how long do we keep?
So right now, we have two systems. The one is Mercado. On that, we have thirty days, that's the new system where we're buying. With the current system that we've had for years, each building is different because they have different servers and each one has different storage amounts. For example, the primary school, we get a day and a half. And then the middle school gets three days.
And depending on the area.
Yeah, depending on the area. And high school gets about seven to eight days because they have the newest server.
Is, is there any way possible that, I just want you to think about it. I, I don't think that's enough time. Attention, we need, we need at least thirty days.
Right, and that's why we're looking at Mercado now. And some of the cameras like with the ones we use at the GM to catch those, you know, the incident, those do record for thirty days.
Thirty days.
Anything where we add, anything that we add from now on, it will record for thirty days on the new stuff that we have now.
I'm going to keep track of that.
I mean, if we, if we can find out a way, we do ninety days, that'd be wonderful, but I'm just dreaming.
So they can do up to a year. It's just you paying for however many days you want to go past thirty days.
Okay.
But usually, you know, within thirty days, if we need to go back and save something.
And, and, and the thing is with the new system right now, if you want to save a file, you can archive it and it'll stay there for years. You know, how you want to do it, as long as you're with the company.
Take up any installation.
Right, we don't have physical servers, you know, on campus, it's all cloud-based. And it's, it's very easy to use, user-friendly. I was able to share a file with the principal and even one of the police officers on the fly within minutes, literally. And what I like about it is I can also make the same file that I share expire. So if I, if I want them to view it for thirty minutes, after those thirty minutes, it's gone. You know, but I can save it on our system for thirty days or however long I want to save it as well, for years. And if you want to increase your amount of storage, you just call the company, but you will pay more.
And that's the system we're cycling to now is with the base on.
I think we said it goes back to the cloud system.
Yes, I agree. If you're great.
You know, with, with us, we have to save most of it.
And it's a lot higher quality than what we've gotten now too.
It's a lot better. Yeah, you got paid an commission, you got all kinds of stuff, you know.
That's why we got behaved. Straight back to ninety, sit here. All right, that's all I have. Don't have anything else, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, I approve, say hi. Oppose, same side.